This is Town Hennessey Board of Trustees regular meeting made the 11th, 2023 Town Hall Council Room at 6:00 P. M. Number one, roll call please.
Randy.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Dave.
Here.
Number two, report from the Hennessey Board of United.
Bert? I don't have anything and my position on that board was because I was mayor. Their violation for the mayor to serve.
I did not know that.
It was for the mayor to appoint.
You can appoint, as long as you don't point this direction.
I apologize, I was unaware.
Well, they haven't met since you've taken over.
Oh, okay.
When do you meet?
The third Thursday, which would be next, a week from tonight, at 6:30.
I'm sorry, I'm sending this to show.
Somebody like to.
I'd like to point Cliff.
When's that gonna ask for another day off in a week?
If you do not want to do it, I will do it.
6:30? We'll see what we can do.
At the market table.
Okay.
Well, same thing, you can get coffee and all kinds of treats.
Who drinks coffee? I'm too young to drink coffee. Now give me a.
Okay, you can get another kind of drink and a treat, it's a win-win.
You can't do it, I will, I will show up.
Okay, we'll just have to see. I won't be there this Thursday, I'm already scheduled to work. Would you attend in my eye? Thank you. Consider for approval of consent agenda, A, minutes to the March meeting, B, approval of the claims as follows, April purchase order.
Okay, the computer system went down.
True, it's been down all week.
There are two copies up there of everything that they gave me as of the time I walked in the door this evening.
Okay.
Kelly, this would be, this would be the product you're talking about. Okay, well, I noticed, I got a couple of questions, Cliff, if you don't mind. Cliff.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Cliff, it's right there at hand, it's right there.
The first three pages were sent out in read aheads with the email that you sent out. These other three pages, or these other pages are dated May the 11th, AR billing. Somebody needs to train me on what, what is AR billing? What does AR stand for?
Okay, AR is account receivable, and the reason, our system's been down, so Ronnie has not been able to get everything in the system that's broken down.
Okay.
So she took it today and she typed everything up so you guys would at least see how much was being lost as well.
Okay, that, that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and.
That was the only way we could get anything to use tonight, today.
I got you, okay, that's it, that's all I got on.
Okay. Since the computer's been down, we won't have any numbers. So.
Cliff, can I, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, Katie was talking to me this evening about that, and she suggested that you can either approve, like, I mean, she said that that's probably, I don't know, maybe two-thirds of the totals, that you can either approve up to like a certain amount, a certain figure, or have a special meeting to approve it when they can get it all in.
Okay. I think we should do the special meeting.
Okay.
To do that, because I, I don't think we can approve claims as an estimate. I think it's gotta be a real number to be legal.
Okay. I've never, okay, we will table the consent agenda because of lack of the computers being down all week. Do they have an idea when they're gonna be back?
Sometime next week.
That's gotta be really tough.
It's lots of money.
And just so everybody knows, that they had to spend time by, and had to handwrite all checks for the whole entire week. And we have 52 employees, and Shelley stayed up all the time, I don't know who else was that helped her, but to do every one of those town checks by hand on time. So I want to say thank you very much for your help and support of doing that, and I'm sure all the town employees really appreciate it.
I was the favorite employee today.
Thank you. We will go on to four, nominate the elect new vice mayor.
I nominate Harold Shaw.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Dave.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
No.
Randy?
No.
Okay, for three to two, we will have Harold as our new vice mayor. Certificate of presentation to the newly elected officials.
Okay, Randy, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Cliff, welcome.
Citizen comments. Anybody wanna say anything? Town administrators report new purchases and new employees.
New employees, Colton Shaw started as a summer help, as Dottie had mentioned, we don't hire anybody, he started in April. And also along the lines of new employees, Steve Whitlock did report that the OMMS has started advertising process for the position that I am in. Prayers have been answered, and they're gonna, the call date for the resumes, accepting resumes is June 26th of this year.
I'm sorry, I, I need.
OMMS, Steve Whitlock has reported that they've got, started the advertising process.
Oh, okay.
And then when they started getting resumes, they're gonna cut that off at June 26th.
June 26th, okay, thank you.
Purchasing, the first half of the payment for the CIC training was sent in in April, and we made the seventh payment to Worth Hydrochem for the water treatment plant, which, like I mentioned last month, is up and running, and running really, really well. They've had a few hiccups, but nothing that caused any problem, and it's going along with the change order number two. The bids for the re-water line project came in for Dunlap, they were opened April 14th. The drainage project on Mitchell is continuing according to schedule, but there have been a few hiccups. Do you want to discuss that now, or?
I've got it on the agenda later.
Okay, okay, okay. List of building permits for April, 501 South Main, I don't know what the, oh, Fire Station Edition, that's, that's going along really fast, it's looking cool.
This part?
Yeah, the demolition part, and then 515 was a fence permit for Parentil Figueroa. I did get in touch with the attorney again, and he's got to reach out to the board again about this to see what direction you guys want to, want to go with this for the RV and sewer dump ordinance. And again, the sewer truck, or the food truck, sewer truck, depending on which food truck you go to. The food truck, we discussed last month, with no action yet, so. If you guys had any questions about the hiring process or advertising process for the administrator, I've got Steve's email address on there, he welcomes you guys to call or email him, and he'll answer any questions you got.
I got a question on the sewer dump, why can't we go ahead and open it up and be making money while we're waiting on our lawyers to decide what's right or wrong? We've been making money off of it for, ever since it's been opened up, except for the last year it's been shut. What, what would be the problem of opening it up and, and just start making money with it?
I think what you just said, waiting for the attorney to decide what's right or wrong, we don't want to open it and be wrong.
But we've been, we've been opened up for, ever long since we built it till a, a, a mulcher's been down, so that's the only reason we shut it down, you know? We're making money with it, you know? Why wouldn't we open it up and make money?
I'd like to make sure that we're doing it right with the attorney, so. I don't know what was going on beforehand.
Where we're doing it wrong for five years.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
You know, our deal wasn't, we, you know, we want to go buy and change the rules, you know, be like Kingfisher, be like whatever, but it was making us money when it opened.
I don't know.
We've lost a lot of revenue for that not being opened for the last year.
Yes, we have, that is true.
Yeah.
Well, it's not on the agenda to open tonight, I don't think.
Well, evidently it don't have to be after our approval to open it, or set it, because it was, it was shut down without our approval, so why can't he open it back up? That's all I'm asking, you know? We didn't shut it down because the board said they shut it down, it was just shut down for, because the mulcher went down, and we haven't opened it back up, we fixed the mulcher, and still have not opened it back up.
Is there, is there legal issues, I guess I'm not for sure what's, what the issue, or what's, what's going on?
Well, we had made some recommendations on how it was to be used and what it could be used for, and any of you guys correct me if I'm wrong, and the attorney was supposed to be putting us together ordinance for that.
I guess I see Harold's point, we're still allowing food trucks in town with other ordinance for the same thing, is there a potential for litigation of some sort by leaving it, or by opening it back up?
It was closed, it was closed because the mulcher went down, and when the mulcher got back up, or, and he's not here tonight, he says that he should have opened it back up, but, you know, we just didn't, we haven't opened it up for some reason. And you can fight the numbers however you want, it made us money. You know, if you go by the email I got, it made us $75,000 in three years, we spent $45,000 in repairs of the dump, so in three years it still made us $37,000. So, you know, and the part of the 30, the $45,000 that was in repairs, that was for the pump, the thrasher, you know, and that was, the pump and the thrasher, dump run, the dump, the sewer dump for the RV, it runs the pump for everything. So it's not just the RV dump that it was paying for, it was paying for the whole town, crap to be vaulted and pumped. So you think we'd have it opened up, at least be paying for, you know, that services, you know? We don't have much revenue anyway, so any revenue that would help us, would help us. You know, it's just like you, if you come to my house and you beat me in a game of chess, I change the rules. That's exactly what we're doing, we're having an attorney write up rules and regulations, we can, we can put it up and have it opened up, running, and then come July 1st, after the attorney gets his stuff and say, all right, these are new rules to dump in our site.
Well, it's been closed this long, why not leave it closed for another month and?
We've been, we've been waiting on attorney for three months to get us this deal.
Well, we can get in touch with him and see where we're at.
That's all I'm asking, I, I just don't know why we're gonna lose money every month.
Okay. Number eight, other scheduled business discussed, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discussion of the possibility of taking action to approve payment for the craft rentals payment.
Number two.
This is our second payment.
Do you want to finish reading the rest of the agenda item, or are you okay?
Oh, of the number two, using the CBDG funds for the amount of $43,315.25 for the CBDG grant of hashtag, I mean, number 1-852-3-21, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it is a number sign, so you should have a copy of that in your paperwork, this was the company that you hired for the drainage project, it says it's about 63%. I'm curious, is this the point you're gonna talk about, the hiccups, because I didn't know there was hiccups?
Yes.
So I would like to know, hiccups?
Did you put that on the agenda?
I don't see it.
Because I want it to be on there too, so I don't know which. Well, I was approached by it, okay.
I don't see it on the agenda.
I, because I'm trying to issue, look at it, third Mitchell.
Oh, I see, okay, I'll wait, I'll exactly wait till the other one, so we'll talk about that.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I have to wait till your public works agenda anyway.
Because my issue isn't really with the construction companies, with the engineer.
Oh, okay, so, but anyway, this is our great upon price for the percentage of work that they've completed from our last month till current, and the grant funds are gonna be paying a hundred percent of this invoice, so it just needs approval.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the payment of $43,315.25 for the CBD grant of number 1-852-3-21.
Agreed.
Roll call please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
All right, welcome to the signature club.
He does it so much, neither.
You're gonna miss your signature.
Couldn't read it.
Isn't that cool? Thank you.
B, discussion with possible action to have lifeguards pay a percentage of the swim lesson fees they charge to the town for the use of the pool.
All right, for, pool's been open what, three years? I know it's in our policy that we charge, that we're supposed to charge the lifeguards 10% of their pay to get swim lessons, but we only did it for the first month of the pool being open. Now all of a sudden, two and a half years or a little bit more, now we're gonna start it back. I just, do we really need to do that, or can we, why can't we just keep on letting them do like they've been doing?
Well, one thing, they are using our town pool, and that we, we are responsible for their, the people, that there's an accident there, that died off talent is responsible for that, and that's to make sure that we don't have something going on that we don't know about.
Do we charge for them to do the little lap things around there?
The water walking, yes, they pay to get in.
So my question is though.
And then goes back, Harold, to way back to the old pool, it was being done that way when the old pool was open as well.
My question is though, we haven't been doing it for two and three quarters of a year, so why all of a sudden are we doing it now?
Well, I guess we may stop if it had been done, and I certainly wasn't aware of that, but.
We only charged them the first, first month.
This becomes a legal issue because if, let's say, a citizen calls Troy up and says, bring the back over here and dig a hole in my yard, and he doesn't, and they hand him a $100 bill. Or that's totally illegal because he's using taxpayer-funded equipment on private property, and granted, the pool's not private property, but this is for personal gain. And according to our accounting people, that's what we have to do. Now, my suggestion is, if the lifeguards charge $15 an hour for a lesson, add that 10% on and charge $16.50, and the parents can pay the town's portion. But like Cliff said, we've got liability exposure there, and the, I couldn't care less about the money because it's not, in the grand scheme of the town budget, it's not a drop in the bucket. But from a legal standpoint, it keeps us from being accused of allowing them to use town equipment for personal gain.
But my deal, we do that anyway, but, you know.
We do that anyway.
We do that anyway, so that's a different subject, but my deal is, I always wanted to know, because it's been brought up, that we haven't been doing it for two and a half years, or a little longer, we charged for the first month since we opened the pool, now all of a sudden we're gonna charge again. So all I wanted to add there is, you know, I don't got, I don't got a lifeguard, you know, it's just been brought up, you know, that we haven't done it in three years, now all of a sudden.
I don't know why it's getting done.
You know?
Any idea?
No, but I called some different schools, different pools around here and asked how they do it. Kingfisher lists their lifeguards, use their facility, and does not charge them to do swim lessons, but they do it during closed hours. And Okarche charges their lifeguards 20%, and they, if people do not pay their lifeguards, the people pay the town of Okarche. So if you're doing a lesson, you pay for a lesson, you go to the town hall, you pay them how much ever it is, the lifeguard, the town takes the 20% because it over in the town part, and then the other percent will go on the lifeguard's next paycheck, and it is tax deducted.
You know, that's all our problem, of it only getting done for a month. They come here and pay for their kids' swimming lessons, and then the town withhold it and pay, add it to the lifeguard's check.
That's how they did it, and then there was a third town, I'm gonna say Okene, messaged me back, and they don't charge their lifeguards either. They use it, they look at it as like, give them back to the community because they want the kids to learn how to swim versus make the money.
I can see that point too.
So.
Yeah, I can too. And if there's a legal way we can do that, I'll be on the board, like I said, I couldn't care less about the town getting the dollar and a half an hour, whatever it is.
Like the lifeguard lessons are a hundred and fifty dollars, or, you know, I really don't know, but I know I paid like a hundred bucks to have my grandkids have lessons or whatever, so you talk about 10 bucks.
Yeah, I think that 10 bucks is gonna make a difference, or as far as the.
But for a 19, 20-year-old kid, the 10 bucks might make a difference.
Sure, we want to make sure we continue to attract those people to be lifeguards.
So I'm just asking, can you make something where the lifeguards that are using it sign a waiver that they're using it, but it's on, not the town's?
I don't think the waiver's gonna relieve the town of any liability.
Here's what, and I agree with Bert on this, because when I was on the racetrack, I got a waiver, and signing on, as a waiver to come in and race, you know, and I had people go out there and they'd get hurt, the first thing they do is they guess who they sue. You know, so I understand that, but my biggest deal was, the problem that I had was for three years the pool's been open, we didn't charge them, but for one month, and all of a sudden, now we're charging. You know, I don't know how many lifeguard lessons are over there that they give, we probably ain't gonna make 60 bucks off the deal. You know? You know, I don't know how many lifeguard you, you know, to actually fully give the lessons there, so I don't know why it would be really a subject of, of why we want to charge.
Well, does the 10% actually cover any sort of the liability or anything like that?
Me, I think we just ought to let it keep continuing how they've been doing, and, you know, whether we're supposed to be charging, I don't know why they can't come in here and pay you a dollar for it, or something, you know, if that, that would cover it, you know?
What if, okay, for elementary kids, and, and I don't know, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's like $2 for them to get into the pool and swim, is, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, what if, when they show up to take their swim lessons, you charge them the $2 like you would for them to get into the pool, and then they could come back that afternoon on that same, I mean, is, is that right? If they pay to get in, they can leave and come back?
Well, I think it's two different things, because you're paying for two different services. If you're paying for a lifeguard for swim lessons, that's one service, and then if you're paying to come and swim, that's a whole different service, that's how I think that would.
Well, I would, I mean, me personally, I would look at it that the $2 is going to the town for the use of the pool, and the lifeguard, that's, that's a separate fee. So they're still paying to use the pool.
Me, I like.
Pool actually not gonna open until the end of the month, correct?
22nd.
And if we're gonna have a special meeting, why don't we get an opinion from our attorney? As I said, I talked to the accountant today, but I have no problem with that as long as we're legal, but I don't want to approve something that is gonna allow somebody to take personal gain off city property, and.
I, I think it's a contractual thing, even if the lifeguard paid a dollar, that's contracting with the city to use the pool, that would be the same thing as the 10%. I don't think it's a dollar amount as much as something trades. That $1 makes a contract, and, I mean, you can make it 10 cents, but I think that's, the attorney would probably.
My deal, like I said, we haven't been charged nothing for two and a half years, you know, why just.
But it's, it's a, it's a.
Because somebody read it, no?
It's probably got over a month.
Because somebody read it, no? We, we charged the first month, you know, and after that, they say, honestly, they probably thought the 10, 15 bucks, or 20 bucks, or whatever it was, wasn't really nothing to be messing with, so just don't bid, you know?
Why worry about that?
You know, and now all of a sudden, we're worried about, because we got new people in charge, and they start reading books, oh, we gotta charge these girls 10%. You know, and that's what, that's kind of the way I look at it, you know, and I understand why, you know, but, you know, evidently, we thought it was all right, so we picked the rug up and swept the dirt under it, and called it good. You know, because you ain't talking about big mon, a bunch of money, I mean, there ain't like there's a thousand kids going through their, getting some swim lessons. So, you know, we don't pay our lifeguards that much, you know, that great an amount of money either, you know, which we can all say, yeah, we're paying pretty decent, but, you know, 20 bucks don't go very far, you know? Wherever they get it, they get it, so I'm good with whatever you guys decide, if you want to put it on a special meeting, ask the attorney exactly what we gotta do, you know, for the, take the side of it, I can understand that.
We'll do that. C, discussion with possible taking action to change the family life swim pass stipulations to allow for the use by non-household member.
Okay, I've been hit, I've had 10 phone calls for our season passes. So here's the deal, and even I got a problem with it, I went and paid, and I bought my season passes for my grandkids, but I cannot, I cannot use my season pass.
Oh, can you guys for a break? No, he's, his ear is bleeding.
Oh, so I, I cannot use my season pass, because my grandkids don't live in the same room as I do, you know? Problem I got is, we charge for four members of the family, you know, I can buy a season pass for four people, but I can't be in there because they don't live in the same room. My grandkids live with me all the time they get out of school, not because they have to, so they want to, you know? They only live a block away from me, so it's a lot cooler over grandparents' house, I take my grandkids to the pool 20 times a year. But when I go, I gotta have a special, I gotta pay another $75 for me to go, if I want a season pass. You know, same way with, you know, like, if, one of the deals were brought up, like, I got two kids, I'm divorced, I got a full-time babysitter, how can I, you know, I'll buy the season pass, but can I include the babysitter? We gotta say no, but we'll pay you another $75. We gotta say no, but we'll pay you another seventy-five dollars. Why can't a season pass be for four people? Cause that's what it is for when you buy it. You know, my son, my son and my daughter, not taking their grandkids swimming, it's usually gonna be fought off. I spent, I went twenty times last year to that swimming pool. My daughter went like ten times, my son went one time, my wife went five times. You know, every time I went in there, I paid the twenty bucks. My kids, my, my son and daughter, they got in free, but I'm the one that paid for the season pass. You know, uh, why can't we do?
Harold, all of these things have history behind them. And the reason it was changed to that, because it used to be just exactly like you said. And at one point, I had a grandma with a bunch of grandkids. And she wanted them all to get in under that pass, because they're all at my house at some point or time over the summer. So that was put in place, and I guess what I had in mind wouldn't help your situation at all, that I was thinking on the babysitter deal, if we allowed the family to list a babysitter on that pass as long as she is with those children. So that the babysitter cannot go in when she's not babysitting and walk in under the family's free pass. So as long as she's taking the family's children, she could be listed on the pass, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you know, we live in a small town, and if I bring two kids in, you know, just like me, for example. I only had two grandchildren.
Right.
But I actually got five. You know, I got two from a son of mine, that's, you know, not really my son. And I got another son that's got a kid, so I call them, they're all my grandkids, you know what I'm saying, but.
You sound like the grandma we made the rule for.
But, and that's what I'm saying.
And I'm joking.
You know, and, but I only have two that's blood.
Right.
But I got three that ain't. I paid for two to go in there.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I ain't saying that I ain't gonna give them, you know, hugs or whatever when they show up, but, I mean, you know, I've been in there. What I really don't, what's crazy about it is, I'd rather see them bring a babysitter and come to watch them kids instead of just coming up there and dropping them off at the swimming pool.
Run on the same thing.
You know, cause they can do that. I got a free babysitter now.
I know.
Cause it's, it happens all, all the time.
A lot of people that use it for that.
You know, and it's, you know, and everybody might be in charge, or be at fault with that. So, my, my only deal is, you know, if, I'm gonna use Daniel for example, he's one, he's one of the guys, Ben Griffin, so. You know, I'm gonna use him for example, you're here, thank you, Daniel. He's got two kids, he's got a babysitter, he's gonna put his two kids down, he's gonna put his babysitter, and then him. Period. That's you should come in on his list. You know, if he has to fire his babysitter and hire somebody else, he takes that girl off there and puts another one on there. You know, if that, if that's the case.
But does that give that babysitter?
Not a right.
All weekend, an evening, when she's not babysitting?
If she comes in there by herself, she should have to pay.
Okay.
Is, are the passes by, like, number or by specific names?
Both.
Both.
Okay, so you're naming us a match for ticket, okay, okay.
You know, like last year when I went, the girl knew I bought a season pass, and I had to explain to her that I bought the season pass, but since I don't live under the same roof, I gotta pay you four bucks. So, and I don't have a problem with that, you know, but, you know, we want our kids to go swimming, we all do, you know. I don't, you know, I don't want them dropping the kids off, my grandkids are ten and five, I can make the oldest one, because there's a bunch of kids just get dropped off there, and we got eight kids there, or teenagers there, or whatever, or free babysitters.
She gets babysitter in town.
Hey, if my kids act up, call me. And they're, them women, uh, them girls have got fund members to, my daughter, you know, however you wanna say it, you know. They got the fund member, hey, you can even come up here, your kids acting up, you know, or they're out of money, or they don't have any money, or however you wanna say it. And that's part of the job they shouldn't have to be doing, being a babysitter. So, I just think we could change it a little bit to accommodate our people in the town. You know, uh.
I don't have a problem with that, like I said, I'm much rather still up there with a babysitter than just.
I agree.
I think the change in the babysitter's name because she quits and you keep adding another one, I mean, you have a different babysitter every other day.
Really?
Well, I think once you have a babysitter, that's the babysitter for the summer for that price. If another one comes along, that, you fire her and you get another babysitter, you should have to pay either the twenty-five for a new person on your pass or.
And, and you can do something like that, hey, babysitter quit me, or, you know, cause, you know, here's the thing we did, and I'm just gonna use this for example, because I really don't know. If I'm a sixteen, seventeen year old girl, I'm babysitting two kids, and all of a sudden, three, three weeks into the babysitting, these damn kids get on my nerves, I'm quitting this job, I'm gonna go work for Sonic, it'd be a lot easier, you know. You know, I'm quitting this job, and I'm gonna, you know, so if he has to add somebody, put the twenty-five dollar fee on there. You know, uh, I can see that, so.
Well, I, I'm not too concerned about that. Adding another twenty, I mean, and I see what you're saying, Shelley, but if we're taking one off and putting one on, I don't think it'll change every day, hopefully.
But, you know, and here's the thing we did.
If they were, I'm, so if they were babysitting a couple of my grandkids, but I'm not gonna say that.
But here's the thing we did.
Change every day.
How many people were already letting get in free, but they bought, they bought the season passes?
People had.
How many people were getting in free, because they, uh.
I don't know.
You know what I'm saying, you know, Shelley's got, what, five grandkids, you know, one of hers, I claim myself, you know, Cameron.
You can pay for it.
So, uh, you know, and who brings them in there, you know, who paid for the season pass, they come in, you know. Uh, you know, uh, my wife, first time she went, they let her in free. When she came home, she told me they let her in free. I said, well, you owe the town a pool, four bucks. You know, she said, why? I said, cause that season pass ain't good for us. You know, you gotta pay, you know, so, you know, I just think there ought to be, you put four people down on the deal, that's who ought to get in.
Okay, I, I can do that.
I agree, or, the pass, I don't know.
I think the family's just good up to six people, is it five or six?
Supposed to be four.
It's not four, no. It's a minimum of five, or at least five.
We had to verify that for me, because I thought it was four. Family of four. But.
I probably thought it was six, to be honest, but.
Cause yeah, uh.
You have to make the rules, so it don't matter.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you can, you can go look real quick.
I did a family of six the other day, because I really think that's what it is.
It's the town where it's like, it's on there.
Especially like, it just seems like it's awful, six is awful cheap for a hundred and fifty bucks, we might need to go up on the price.
We've already set those for the year, haven't we?
Huh?
Those have already been set for the year?
I, I paid a hundred and fifty bucks the other day for, for, I thought it was a family's pass, so. Apparently I came off as still, can I add six? I'm sorry you guys are taking this long, I didn't think it'd be that big of an issue.
No, I, well, you, there's just so many variables.
Yeah.
You know, it's a good point, there's so many variables to it, that what ifs and what ifs and.
Because one of the variables, what, you know, was, what if it's a couple of splits?
Okay, Harold, it does say up to five people on the pass, and then twenty-five dollars for the sixth.
See, and I, and I think on a deal like that, you know, it's a.
Well, yeah, um, that's what I searched like a while ago, I think the pass should follow the kids. And if the kids are at mom's house, kids still get in on the pass. If the kids are at dad's house, they still get in on the pass. Maybe dad, maybe dad bought the pass, and when the kids aren't there, they're not technically in his household, but, you know, this thing's really for the kids.
For sure.
And a few of you, you old guys that like it. But, but, you know, I really feel like it should follow the kids. And, and the babysitter, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
As long as I'm not the babysitter.
I don't know.
But Bert, you ought to be the babysitter and go enjoy airport. It's a nice pool.
It is.
Shelley, you're saying that each person has a number to, added to a name? So if we had, say, you could have up to five for the amount, that you could have the five names on there with the five numbers?
Well, it's one number, so like, if I take my grandkids, I have four grandson kids that live with me.
Right.
So if I had to put, and I'm their first family to buy, I would put, it would say like, Guppy Kids, or however you word it, I, I, this is how I do it here at town hall, and they'd be family number one, and you list the kids' names. So it would say Cameron Holden, Maddie Kinsey, and then you could put a fifth person on there, so since they live with me, I could put my name on there, or I could put their mom's name on there, whoever. And then for twenty-five dollars, you can put a sixth person on there. But we all live in the same house.
Right.
So we would all be number one. And then if you come and buy the pass for your family, and your, whoever's in your house, you would be pass number two, and your people would be listed on that pass. And then whenever you come, for instance, if my grandson goes to the pool with somebody else, he's still, he can go because he's on a pass, his name's on pass number one. He don't have to be with me to go, he can go whenever he wants, and he's at number one. I mean, so, I mean, it don't matter to me how you guys do it, just, we just need to figure it out so we can. Cause I do know we've already sold like six or seven passes.
I think like I said, my deal is like I said, uh, somebody buys a season pass, lets them, you got their, you got their names, you know. That would be able to come in.
Cause I really want the babysitter to be there too, I don't want to have a, a lifeguard turning into babysitter. And now, I know a lot of people do drop off their kids, say, hey, here's my kids, my phone number, I'm gonna go blah, blah, blah. You know, but I prefer to, if that babysitter's gonna be bringing there, then that babysitter would be responsible more, because lifeguards have a lot to do, I mean, there's a lot of kids there running around, so.
Like I said, last year I was there, and there's a lot of kids under twelve years old that got dropped off there, and so.
Well, I'm sure, yeah.
So, if you have at least a babysitter, you know, but I think that's the way.
Of course, there's no, anybody you wanna say the babysitter will watch the kids either.
Yeah.
Probably got to make a motion, probably need a motion to.
Yeah, we could make that motion, that motion to allow.
To allow babysitter.
Make a motion to allow the babysitters in for a family pass to five, and what else would I want to say?
Would also add it to the sixth as well, though, wouldn't we?
Well, the sixth person is.
That'd be like twenty-five dollars.
Right, but, I mean, that, that would still be okay if they added it, if they already had five, and we, we're okay with them adding that sixth being that, that caregiver as well.
As the caregiver being the sixth?
Yes.
So, uh, my question is, are we taking this out of the family thing? Because let's say grandma has, grandma's buying her five kids, and all five kids live in different houses, are we taking out of the household out? I mean, where are y'all going with this? Because that's what, that's my, that'd be my next phone call, soon as they watch this on there. Hey, I have five grandkids, and they all live in different houses, can I put them all on there?
My deal is, if they buy a season pass for five, you put five people on that season pass.
Yeah, if it's name-specific, that, that the pass stays with you.
Like me, for example, I could put me, my two grandkids, my wife, and one of the others. My son shows up, because I know he ain't gonna show up very often, he gotta pay, charge him double.
Yeah, he didn't want twenty-five dollars to add on.
You know, charge him double when he shows up, but, you know, that's what, I think if you buy a family pass for five, and you put the five people down, like you did me, not me, I mean, you didn't add five, but, you know, that's the people that ought to be allowed to come in there, anybody else that don't come in there, we're a small enough town that that shouldn't really.
We're gonna know who's on that pass.
So Shelley, the answer to your question is yes.
They do not have to live in the same house.
Right. They'll buy the pass for the person's name.
But we still need a motion to change that.
To make a motion to allow five people to be on a family pass with signature, right?
Right, yes.
And then will you have the twenty-five for one extra also?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Harold.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Dee, discuss with possible actions to review the initial swimming pool aquatic center season up setup costs concluding concession stand. David.
Okay, Cliff, this, this is my item, and I'll just put this on here for discussion, I'm not asking for any kind of vote on this tonight, okay? Uh, and let me tell you why. Uh, I, I did a poor job, I think, of asking for, uh, setup costs. I, I didn't get everything that I needed to get in order to, and it's not Kelly's fault, I'm not blaming Kelly on this. Uh, there's, there's certain setup costs in our chart here, okay? Uh, pool concession stand supplies, uh, Sam's Club, garrison lumber, supplies for pool, legacy lawn and pest, uh, spray between splash pad and pool, then there's another Sam's Club on the back page. Uh, that's only part of the information that I really wanted. Uh, and let me back up just a little bit, uh, I got a couple of questions for this side of the room. This is why I'm looking at initial setup costs. Uh, am I correct in saying that I remember that we had a loss on the pool last year? David, that, that's for you or Shelley, either one to answer?
I don't know any financial stuff.
We had a very small, well, I, and not to interrupt you, David, but I see in the error in this, Sam's Club, that four oh three eighty-one that says pool concession stand supplies is not. That four oh three eighty-one of.
Should be like twenty-eight hundred?
No, it was, that was, that was fire department, because I went over that bill today, and the firemen pay that out of the, out of the fundraising account, so.
We already got a check for that.
That shouldn't be in this chart.
Okay.
But it says pool in it.
Okay.
Okay.
But I've seen a, I've seen a receipt for twenty-eight hundred dollars for, probably, that's why that.
So there was one for twenty-four hundred dollars from Sam's, because we went and pitched it up.
So, so that number, all right, let me, let me back up. If I'm not mistaken, I remember our previous town administrator informed the board that we were, we were at a two thousand, around a two thousand dollar loss on swimming pool operations last year. Is that pretty close, David or Shelley?
I had nothing to do with that last year.
You had nothing to do with it? Uh, is that information available on file in, in, in the town hall?
I'm sure it's somewhere in this book, yes.
Okay, all right.
Did you all show that?
Um, I'm not sure. Then, I wanted to fall back another year, I wanted to see what kind of end of season financial statement we had. In, in other words, I'm concerned if we're operating the pool, we need to move from operating at a loss, we need to eventually get to operating at a gain of some kind. And I, I think that we need to take a look at that, and that, that's actually all I wanted to discuss, uh, that's my attitude and thinking on this, and the reason I wanted to put it on here as a discussion item, is I wanted to splatter it out on the table for you guys to chew on and think about, and maybe we, I may put something on the agenda next month for, for a vote on this, on this topic.
Can I respond?
Absolutely.
Um, I disagree that the pool needs to operate at a profit. Uh, I feel like the pool, two things, one is a service to the children, our community. And I pray, if we try to make it operate at a profit, we may increase car. And I pray, if we try to make it operate at a profit, we may increase costs to where some child may not be able to go. And I think that's very unfortunate. Just as police department, fire department, uh, many of the services parks the town provides certainly operate at a deficit. And I feel like the trade-off of having that pool, if we are operating at a two thousand dollar a year deficit, it's worth it. My other issue with it is that we asked the taxpayers to pass the sales tax for the pool, which they overwhelmingly supported. And I feel like, um, it, the, in the past, it's always been important to pass town boards to keep the concessions and the admission prices affordable for, for children. I, it would break my heart if I thought some kid didn't have the dollar and a quarter or whatever it took to get in, that wanted to go swim. And, and I, and I see where you're coming from, David, and I'm not trying to be argumentative over it at all. But I just feel like it's a, it's a service to the children of our community.
I'd also like to add one thing if I may, if I.
Sure, yeah, I'm done.
And we have a lot of people coming from other towns to go into our pool. And so they're also eating at our restaurants, they're also buying our gas. They're, they're bringing money into our community because we have such a lovely place for them to go, so. I, I don't think you can just really justify the numbers of the profit and loss on the, the pool because of the other income that it brings in to the community.
Your sales tax dollars, yeah. We did raise a few, although the, I did just a little bit for like the popping candy this year, but only because the, everything else went up. But everything's still, I think, very affordable, like two dollars for a pop, two dollars for a candy bar. And three dollars is like the most expensive thing. And I think that is for like the Lunchables and the peanut butter jelly sandwiches and the large gateways. Um, we have twenty-five cent popsicles, we got fifty cent bottles of water, they're smaller bottles of water. But we do have some of the cheaper items too for kids there.
See, I agree with you Bert and Cliff. I understand about what he's going through and I understand kind of what he's saying. Whether we lose money on the pool or not, it would be nice to know that an accurate account of what.
Okay.
At what, what we got.
Crawford's and Associates pull those numbers for you faster?
Last year we got a handwritten note, so.
Say Crawford's, Crawford's and Associates that's helping you now might be able to pull that a little faster than go through the files.
That's just the, you know, that's what I'm saying, I understand both sides. We should not turn a kid down. If a kid comes up here and says, hey, I, I don't got the money to come in there, let's go in here. Grab Holden, go throw him in the, you know, see if he can swim. John Wayne.
We need, we need someone to step up and donate like, um, to the town of Oakdale. The mill at Oakdale donates five thousand dollars to the swimming pool every year. So every kid that goes swimming there is free and all adults pay a dollar.
Who donated some?
Oakdale, the, that's how Oakdale's.
Somebody donated.
Somebody donated.
Five thousand dollars for kids admission through the summertime. And then the adults that swim there are a dollar. So if anybody wants to donate, you know, some five thousand dollars, we could sell that.
Jack, you're even ready.
That's what I see.
I was hoping for a good one.
Okay, moving on now. Uh, discussion of possible actions to review approved monthly treasurer's report. Oh wait, we did that one, sorry. Okay. On the aquatic center financial data throughout the entire season.
Okay, Cliff, this one's mine also. Uh, actually, our discussion on item D negates what I wanted to do here with item E. I was gonna ask you guys to vote on it. And the reason I was gonna ask is because of our conversation that we had in the special meeting recently about, remember, if you remember in the special meeting, I asked, I said that I wanted to see some financial data.
Right.
On a monthly basis. And, uh, I think, Bert, I think it was you told me that I would have, we would have to vote on that.
You're talking about putting stuff on the screen?
Yeah, putting stuff on the screen. You said I would have to, we would have to do a board vote on that and I didn't wanna do that.
Good, good change, you can.
And, and I'll just be honest with you guys. I realize that you guys may not wanna review a bunch of financial data in this meeting. And I'm okay with that, even though I still wanna review it. And what I'll do is I'll take your advice from last, our special meeting. You also mentioned that I could get with our accountant and I could see a lot of financial data that I've been asking about. So I plan on doing, I plan on doing that.
I'm sure you're probably reviewing those quarterly, quarterly reports.
Yes, sir, I am.
And that should have pool data in every, every department broken down.
Yeah.
What he really wants to see is like our project over there on Mitchell Road. He wants to see a progress report that could be seen on the screen instead of driving by. He wants the whole town, the whole town of Hennessy to be able to see that. But if we discuss it during our meeting or not, it'd be allowed where they can view it on TV. You know, if they want, if they wanna open something up on our agenda or whatever, they can open it. Not really discuss it through here, but you know, when you got the, the agenda on the meeting, it shows how far along they come, you know, where, where they're at, you know, like our, like our water project out here, you know, it went over a year, you know, or, or longer. And nobody really knew how it was coming along, not unless you was inside here, so.
Wouldn't that be the town administrator report?
Yeah.
That's, and something like that, you could add it in the town.
Just a little more detail.
But, but just a little bit more detail with, you could actually look at it on internet. And I think that's what he's asking, right?
Jack, you weren't here for the special meeting. What I was talking about is project or program management software.
Oh, I was here for that one, yes.
You were, okay. That's what I was talking about and I'm trying to encourage, you know, my colleagues on the board. I guess I wanna call it, uh, a little bit of modernization in the way we operate. Uh, project and program management software, it's very clear, it's very specific. And it's a management tool for the people that work here in Town Hall to use. And it's actually a communication tool for us to receive the information. And it, it's all right there. I mean, it, you know, it's a, does everybody know what a Gantt chart is? I'm talking about a Gantt chart, project management software. It's pretty cool stuff and I used it myself in the military.
Put that on the town's website?
I used it myself in, in the military and in the Department of Defense. And you know, you can put, on some of the software, you can put up to, you know, a hundred projects. And it's just amazing how you can, how easy it is. Ms. Barbara, were you asking me a question now?
I'm sorry, can't you just put that on the town's website for that meeting, those reports? Can't you?
Yeah.
I mean, I would think you can.
You're talking about.
I know the school can do that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, eventually, once our, once we got used to using it and looking at it and understanding it and everything, absolutely. Then I would come in here and, uh, uh, I would recommend to the board that we put that out on the All About Hennessy website.
But David, is that a, is that a, uh, cause I'm not familiar with the software you're talking about. Is that a, a software program we would need to purchase?
Yeah, you would, I'll give you an example, uh, Microsoft, you know, you got, you know, Microsoft has Word and Excel, okay. Well, they make another software, it's called, uh, Microsoft Project. And it's for, specifically for project management. And it's, that's the one that I used for years.
Probably not all that expensive.
No, no, you can buy that software for probably three hundred dollars or less and put it on every computer in here in the building. And, uh, I'll talk some more. I'm sorry, I know we're not on my agenda item here, but Cliff, seriously, uh, the way we discussed item D, I'm not, uh, there's no reason for us to vote on item E. Without item D being agreed upon verbally with us, there's no reason for Shelley to be putting, uh, financial data together for me just yet. I may ask her to do some stuff.
Okay, thank you, David.
I, I, I'm, I'm good with D and E.
Thank you. Discussion with possible action to approve recommendations for the library board terms. If you have that in your packets, Carla Van G and Lenore Ortega, terms are in in twenty twenty-four. Ginger Cox term ends in twenty twenty-five. Karen Vogt and Ann Taylor ends in two thousand, I mean, twenty twenty-six. I make a motion to accept the library board recommendation?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes?
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
G, discussion with the drainage issue located at Third Street and Mitchell.
Okay.
Did you get the email, Shelley?
They never came.
I sent it, they're mine.
They wouldn't open.
It wouldn't open?
No, we're sending them, try me.
I went over and looked at that a couple of days ago and I'll bear with me, I'm trying to get my, my pictures up here. I, what was the total cost of this project? Two hundred and thirty-one thousand, is that right, Jennifer?
Yes, two thirty-two, one seventy-three, point thirty-three. No, sorry, that's, that's the change order. So our grant total for the pop, for the project is three sixty-seven, three fifty-two.
I hate to be a stick in the mud on this deal, but in my opinion, all that money has been wasted so far. Because that project is not one to drain. I, if you go over to Third and Mitchell and look down in that drain, we've got the new, and, and you all are welcome to pass my phone around. We've got the new pipe coming in from the south. We've got a little concrete dam up that high over it, then a concrete base. And then it's gotta jump up that much further to get in to drain north. So everything south of Third Street is gonna hold water and be a big mosquito nest. And I don't blame our construction people whatsoever because this is how the engineers drew it up.
So where's Third and Mitchell at?
Right by the nursing home.
Tim, Tim Taylor's house?
That's Fourth and Mitchell, okay.
Church Christ is at Fourth. But you see what I'm saying on there? And that's what I was trying to get Shelley to be able to print.
Yeah, I went down there after it rained.
Did you see what it's doing?
Yeah, and I, and I'm thinking, how the hell's it raining? Because it ain't, because some of them didn't already have two foot of water in them and they went, they hadn't even hit the culvert yet.
They're gonna hold water and, uh.
Do we need to have a meeting with the engineer, bring them down and take a look at it?
Yes, because I asked David to call him yesterday. And I'm gonna state this very boldly and plainly, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but it seemed like they just kinda blew it off.
See, this, here, here it works, this is, this is.
That's not nice.
Because we've got, we've got a line coming from the south here. We got it going into a line that's higher and then we went on north and put in more new line. So what we need to do is go in that space in between and we may need to.
Give it to her.
Oh, God.
Randy?
That's not very a picture.
No, it's not.
Did you text me the picture?
Yeah.
Cause they need to, when it comes this way, all of a sudden, all that, all the other, from that way, it's all full filled up.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I was told from get-go when we started down here on Seventh Street or down to whatever, Fifth and Sixth Street. Coming this way, when they started putting it in, it was wrong, all the way from down to that end, you know? And, you know, so once it goes on south, how's it gonna drain from here to there? When it's not, there's right now, you could drive over there the other day or yesterday, there's still water in the ditch.
Yes.
Right.
You know, I can start stocking, stocking fish in there when you go fishing. So, or I know you can go turtle on them. So how's it gonna drain? To me, those houses that's got yards that's covered, it's the culverts, it's gonna have to be ripped up.
That's gonna have to come out.
And, or, or something.
So we need to bring the engineer back out and look at that with us and talk about it. So, um, to avoid an agenda being posted and having a special meeting, I don't know if you wanna pick two of you to be there and then bring that information, you know what I'm saying? So board members can be present since you guys bring the issues up, but not constitute a meeting.
Yeah.
You just have to be careful with that. We'll see if we can work out dates and times. Cause I don't want issues.
No, and what concerns me, Jennifer, is we've got this gap, what Harold's talking about, where people got culverts in their yards, that I guess we need to wait on the next grant and address that and have that taken out. And replace, but my worry is that if, if we're up here with one pipe, time we get to the other new pipe, what if it's up here? And we're, and we're still not gonna drain. I don't spend that kind of money to fix a drainage issue that ain't gonna drain.
Problem is, they're still working and it's gonna be worse if they get on down here. You know, cause they're putting it at that one, the water's not gonna run up here.
Well, I, I'd encourage, um, I'd encourage these of, each of you to go there to the east side of the nursing home at Third and Mitchell and just walk over on that north side of Third Street and look down in that drain. The water comes from the south. You can tell very, very clearly what's happening.
I was okay, I, I, ever since we started that project, I've been over there. I was told from get-go that when they started putting it in there, that, that water wasn't gonna drain.
Bert, can you, can you order a stop work so they don't continue working until you talk to the engineer?
See, that drains it.
Jennifer?
You do, you need to.
I thought they'd already stopped work. I haven't seen anybody.
We didn't see the contractor.
They fired us this week.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they skipped the house.
I think they've been working on it recently.
They have.
He sent yours, right?
Cause, cause rumor was going around town that they ran out of money, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, I don't know, they just have.
Matter of fact, I even asked David, I said, is there a problem with the paving or something? Cause they did move out for about a month. You could say, we haven't had rain for a month. You know, they've got the culverts on the other side of the street, blah, blah, blah. They packed up everything and moved out. I had, you know, they're quitting West Park down at the school and all that stuff. Now with this park, that was even gone for a while, you know, so. I heard they had another project somewhere else that they sent a crew down there and they had a crew here, you know? But the crew that they sent south, one of them actually did the leveling and all that stuff. And they had to go to the city and work on emergency, emergency issues down there, but.
Well, I will make a phone call to the contractor and the engineer. I'm off tomorrow, but I will work in the morning to make some phone calls to say, hey.
Cause here's what the problem is now.
Hold off and call a meeting next week to.
Here's what the problem is, they skipped a house or a culvert. They skipped a culvert and went to the house in the middle, so, and, and fixed this. I, I don't understand how they did that. They skipped Roger's house and they went to the house next door.
Yeah, I don't know.
How you gonna make that flow?
I know, I know.
It, it didn't make sense when you skipping a house.
The survey markings are on the road.
Yeah, I understand that.
Whether they're following that or not.
Yes, if you can't, if you can't get flow here, how, you know, how you gonna adjust it?
I, I don't think it's a construction company issue though. Do you? I think it's a engineering issue that they.
Well, and, and Bert, I could totally agree with you, but if I'm in the construction business and I know what I'm doing and I see that one six inches higher than the other, I'm gonna stop and ask questions. If, if, if I'm a very good construction guy, cause I know that water ain't gonna jump up at the other.
I've never seen it.
On the request of the board, I don't mind making a phone call to have them kind of reconvene, stop, reconvene with us with the engineer, the contractor, a couple of board members, David.
I'll be there.
Okay, as long as there's, like, if you're gonna hold a meeting, we gotta do a special meeting, so we'll have to be careful. So we just need no more than two board members.
I'd be glad to go there with you.
Okay, thank you.
So Cliff and Bert and.
David, pretty livid when I saw it, him being honest with you.
And she had photos with the water sitting there, so I have those. I'm gonna text them to the engineer right now.
Well, and I saw the water sitting there, but they were damming up part of it where they were working temporarily damming it up.
That could be for her.
So I thought, okay, it's no big deal. I've just got a temporary dam downstream. And then I saw this and I thought, no, no, no.
Yeah. Cause I'm afraid.
Because I'm afraid with the summer, if that's holding water like that, all the, yeah, you know, we're going to get all the mosquitoes.
Well, there's supposed to be a lot of rain this weekend.
Yeah.
So, if we can meet next week when it's not raining, then we'll have a good chance to see the problems.
You can go there now and see the problems.
So, so the drainage part we finished before this one, is there any issues with it draining?
It does drain to this point.
So, remember the one that we did, um, last, the last grant we did, where we fixed drainage issues? Is that draining properly?
Honestly, honestly, you can't see it, because it's covered up.
Right.
You know, so, you know.
So, but it's not puddled.
You really can't tell if it's holding water, you know, because most of it's covered up. All you can see is the out, you know, down here on Mitchell Road, so, you know. We can't tell if it's holding water.
Eight.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Great to have that.
Well, thanks for bringing it to my attention. Those are things I definitely want to know, because we want to fix it. It's a, it is an expensive project, so we want to do it right.
Discussion with a possible action to approve the food truck ordinance.
Did we get everything sent to the attorney that we discussed last time? That we wanted on there, those changes? Does anybody know? We might need to get with him, make sure he got them.
That's what, this is the problem I have with our attorney. You know, we've worked on this and worked on this, we've worked on the sewer stuff, you know. It's, it's a bad deal, you know what I'm saying? And why are we dragging our feet?
Well.
You know, we gave, we gave him the rules for the sewer deal already, all he had to do is agree them.
Yeah, I don't know.
We gave him Kingfisher's.
I think on this, I'm not sure he got the information on this.
Yeah.
Food truck thing, but I, I understand where you're coming from on the sewer.
Yeah, I know, I know town politics drags its feet, and it takes pretty much longer than what it should, but I mean, you know, this is getting ridiculous, because we've been working on this for almost eight months now.
I agree.
Almost down there since the last car show.
You're right.
So, it's, it's getting ridiculous on, on the stuff.
Oh, yeah, the chocolate factory, the chocolate one coming, the line of chocolate coming up too.
Well, we're having, we're probably going to have a wrestling tournament this summer, you know, some softball games, people's going to want, you know, put the, uh, food trucks in, and we haven't got nothing.
Lions Club Circus.
That's coming September?
We found that out today.
So.
They will be here, sure will.
I mean, I know he's probably busy, but this was kind of, kind of defined it last, that last time.
Yeah, I think we need to have a discussion. These items that were tabled from last time.
I did go ahead and have them.
I, I think that's good. I think anything we table ought to automatically show back up.
I, I put the.
You all agree with that?
Since we table.
So, we're going to.
If we pass, we table something, and then it would forget to get put on, and.
So, we're going to, or we're going to pass it, just nothing?
Yeah, we haven't got anything on the food truck.
Go to I.
Yes, go to I. Discussion with possible action to approve the quote from Daniel Constructions for the flooring of the cemetery restrooms.
So, we tabled that, right?
Right, we tabled that last time.
And we got no bid, or we didn't get nothing?
Because what we're talking about is there was no plumbing.
Plumbing, right, so.
And Keith, Keith Dobbs had, had visited with me about that and was trying to get a plumber and an electrician both to give him quotes to present kind of a package deal. And apparently, he didn't get them, I hadn't heard back from him, I don't suppose, because he brought anything to you, David?
He, I talked to him the other day, I had to do inspection, and he was there. Um, he was, he got the information he needs, but he hasn't got it put packaged together yet in a quote.
So, in other words, we have to just table, I am, Jay.
All right, I agree.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. New business, any matter not known which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of opposing the agenda, accordance for the section three one-one-nine, title twenty-five O S. This is the comments?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on the, like, the ten percent. How does other towns get away with it? Like, how do they go around not charging for the ten percent on that?
I couldn't tell you, Logan. Just their auditor had taught it or whatever, I don't know.
And I, I mean, I, I understand that it, it's a policy that it didn't, it didn't do it last year. But it's a policy, I think, when the lifeguards get hired, you should say, hey, you're, whoever's doing life, whoever's doing swim lessons, there's going to be a ten percent fee. That gives them a chance to add that in to their fee. Now that you've got three girls that, they've already got several swim lessons already booked, you can't have them go back and say, oh, I need to raise, I need to raise the cost of it, I'm going to charge you for swim lessons. Like, kid's not going to do that for, they're not going to call people back and be like, hey, sorry, I got to raise the fee a little bit. If they knew that, when they first got hired, said, hey, there's going to be a ten percent fee, okay, now I can add that ten percent fee into my cost of my swim lessons.
Right.
And it'd be covered. But it's just hard for a kid to go back and say, hey, I got raised fee. I mean, there should be a way to figure that out somehow. I mean, it, ten percent's not much, but when you're talking about high school kids and stuff like that, I mean, that, that's a lot to them. Some people it's not, but.
Are the lifeguard positions in our employee handbook? What? The lifeguard positions in our employee handbook? It's not, we ought to, we really ought to have them in, so that they know things like that. They know the job description and that it's part-time seasonal and, and that sort of thing.
Right, I mean, that's like, when you go through the applications, you hire these lifeguards, okay, who's going to be doing swim lessons this year?
Yeah.
I am, okay?
Yeah.
You're going to have the ten percent fee added to when you do that for using the pool. Well, that gives them an opportunity to say, hey, I charge a hundred bucks, but now I got to charge a little bit more to cover that fee.
Right.
And then, I mean, that way it can be easier that way.
I agree. And if our attorney tells us it's no big deal, then we have this special meeting, we can. I don't have, I'm just one vote, but I don't have a problem with it not being on there, as long as we're legal. That's all I'm concerned.
That's the only thing that we want. Do the other towns, I mean, do the other towns, like Kingfisher, I know I talked to Brandon Freeze, and he's over that deal, and he says they don't charge anybody.
No.
They just, it's, just they do it because it's helping the community.
Service to the.
Service to the community.
My, my.
But is that, is that in their policy, and they just don't feel by it, or how's that, how's that word?
Like us.
My deal is, you know, we had, we had a town treasurer, or town administrator that was really on the rules, on top of the rules. And I don't think there's no way she would let us not charge them girls down there for something, something that was illegal. And so now, all of a sudden, why, you know? You know, every, every time we do something, we've got to compare it to Kingfisher, or Enid, or this, or that. We got to consider, Hennessy's the only people we really care about.
Right.
I don't care what Kingfisher does, it's us that, what, that we got to take care of. So, I can understand talking to a lawyer and saying, hey, what's the legal deal of it? Give us a week, whatever, to our special meeting, let us talk to the lawyer and see what the deal is. Because coming from the race track side, I understand about signing waivers and all that crap. You know, so, it, it'd be best to talk to, you know, the lawyer, make sure they're anti. Because if they do, kid does drown, whether they're having swim lessons, we need to know what our, what we got to do.
Right, right.
So, I can see where we need to talk to the lawyer real quick, but hopefully it don't drag out to next year's swim. You know what I'm saying? So, because evidently, I know, like I said, we haven't done it for the last two and a half years, but still, let us get the okay.
I just think it would be, if, if they knew about it, when they first got hired on, I think they could have, they could have added extra.
David, probably, David probably can call there tomorrow and ask the lawyer.
Well, and, yeah, and the thing, you know, the thing too, Logan, is this has been a very unusual year, because we lost our town administrator. David come in not knowing, probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, not knowing that that was even, even needed to be told to him, because.
So, we can just mind-blow.
I think he's getting pretty thick skin and pretty broad shoulders, he's.
Well, what happens, new eyes looking at, at things and says, oh, my gosh, we got to do this, and oh, my gosh, we got to do that, and.
Yeah.
Here's what, here's what's crazy, he's been the town pool operator for about three years, but.
But not charging lifeguards or swim lessons.
I just keep the water level, right, and I said, nobody gets burned or sick.
There you go.
Okay. Anybody else in the town?
I did have, but Bert, I didn't know he was going to address that, because I had my own pictures of the water still standing there on, I, I live on Fifth Street, and so it was from Fourth to Fifth, from Third to Fourth, and then it, it seemed to trail off just a little bit as it went on into the new addition, or whatever you call that, back there, on Mitchell Road. But it's, it's bad, really bad. Thank you for addressing it.
Counselors persons?
Report, David?
I've got some stuff, I'll make it quick, if that's possible. I think we need to get, uh, Miss Verka a laptop computer. Uh, we've, we've got a lot of people working in town hall now, and all the computers are occupied, are covered. And she's kind of sort of mobile, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong here, okay? You're, you're not working here in the town hall, you're the town clerk, and you do a lot of work at home, and you do a lot of work here and there and in your car, and so I think we need to get her some kind of computer, and I think a laptop, an internet-capable laptop would be the cheapest route to do it. I, I, I would, you know, strongly recommend that you guys, uh, uh, agree with you on that. And I think, uh, I think that David has the authority to go ahead and spend that money to do that without us having to vote on it. Am I right or am I wrong?
No, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
My deal is she wouldn't have to borrow one of the other girls', she'd have her own.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
Well, it forces her to do town business on something that's owned by the town, so if it needs to be looked at, it's not her personal data that has to transfer.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, it'll protect her.
All right. Appreciate y'all's support on that, I, I, we just have to do it. It's really a no-brainer. Okay, next, next item I got is also on computers. David, this is for you, it's a question, are the office computers linked?
To each other?
Can they, can they talk to each other? Can, can I, can I create a shared folder and put out on one of the computers, and can somebody access that shared folder from another computer?
If it's on the I drive, yes.
Okay, all right. So, that is possible here in the building. Okay, so, you know what a share, a shared drive is, you know what a shared folder is?
Basically what the I drive is.
Okay.
We can all access that.
Okay, very good. And again, that's part of a modernization conversation. If we do later on go to the project management software, it can be on that, on that, uh, share file with, uh, with read-only access for most people and write access for select people, to where everybody ain't going in there and messing stuff up.
Are you specifically talking about the, uh, the information?
The project management stuff we were talking about earlier.
We, we have, uh, currently using a company called Iwork for our work orders.
Uh-huh.
And recently, you guys voted to allow us to do the, uh, permit management, building inspections, and, uh, code enforcement using the same company.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would be a, a project management system already that we're already using. We could, we'd have. Yeah, so we ought to just have to, we could just have them add that to our, our system or to the program that they're supplying us.
Yeah.
Probably.
Okay.
And then that, again, yeah, can be accessed by everybody.
Okay, I was just, yeah, I was just wondering if, I wanted to make sure, because if they weren't linked, it would cost, it would raise the cost of getting that shared drive capability and all that, so it sounds like we've already got that. Very, very good, I'm happy. And David, I was going to ask you also, uh, we talked about the, the Dobbs Construction Company already. Does that going to include the, uh, the, the, uh, west end of the cemetery pavilion? You know, the, the part that's still got basically raw wood?
That's, yeah, that is.
That's going to be all included?
Yeah, you got to cover everything there.
Very good. Can you, uh, can you give me an update on, uh, on the C I C training? I know it's in progress.
Yeah, I contacted them the other day, they still can't give us a definitive answers to when they'll get down here, and it's even more, further complicated, because right now, they're, they're down.
So, they have not started yet?
No.
Nothing, we got zero accomplished so far?
Correct, except just.
And, and we've already sent them a down payment too, haven't we?
Yes, yes.
Interesting.
Right now, they're having, their servers.
Part of their, part of their original contract to the color exhibit was that they had ninety days to provide that service, and we didn't have to pay them the rest until it was completed.
Okay, all right. So, when you guys say the server, say their, their server's down, are you saying their server's down in Greeley, Colorado?
Yes.
Yes.
So, in other words, okay, I got it, I understand that, believe it or not. And I'm kind of being, uh, I'm getting a little ahead, ahead of myself, but I saw a fairly large, uh, a, a, a large number of our employees down at one of the lagoons today, and I think you were down there. You weren't? Okay. I was just wondering if we had a, a problem at the lagoon today that might be of interest to us.
They were working on, uh, one of the manholes.
Oh, manhole?
Putting a new top on it or something.
Oh, okay, all right.
They got to keep it, everything, you know, D E Q, uh, approved, like.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And they just upkeep, basically, manhole stuff.
I've driven by there a thousand times, and I usually see Brian out there, you know, working. And I went down there today, and there was a whole handful of people down there, and I'm thinking, oh.
Well, and they had a delivery today, today also, with the manhole covers.
All right, very good, very, very good.
Yeah, we had one manhole.
Thank you.
Stolen.
That's all I got to, thank you.
David? Man, you had a discussion about a lawnmower.
Yes.
I see it's not on here.
I forgot.
And my deal, I wanted to make sure with the board here that I told you correctly. Early, I told him, he, he was telling me that he needs a lawnmower, it's in his budget. You know, I told him that he need to bring it front of us, but, you know, the, or, that he needed to get, get his bids and then bring to us, or if it's in the budget, he could probably buy it, as he did that. So, how does he need to actually do that? Because I want him to be correct.
I, I did remember to, to call and get the quote on, on that one, where we usually buy them, they give us a state, they have a state bid sheet that they go off of, uh, but I forgot to put it on my report, so.
I just wanted to make sure I told him correctly, you know, I didn't want. Anybody?
Yeah, if it's on the budget, but then, and within his spending limit, the town administrator.
Ten thousand, nine dollars.
Oh, we need to talk them down to ninety-nine, ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
So, I just wanted to make sure I told him correctly, so nothing was wrong.
They'll surely come down.
No, that was, that was, uh, they regularly sell it for just over twelve thousand.
They'll take nine more dollars or something?
I don't know, he might, I don't know.
I would talk to him, say, I could buy it now if you take nine dollars off, I bet you would do it.
I'll give you the nine dollars.
I thought so.
Don't let it show up on the bill.
But he has a spending limit, twenty?
That's just for emergency.
It's emergency, we have one thing. All right, I'll make them, I'll go ahead.
Bert?
Mm, I don't have anything.
Randy?
I don't have anything.
I don't either.
Voice in the room?
Second. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tennessee Utilities Authority Board of Trustees, regular meeting May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Here. Here. Here.
There you go. Okay, Dave?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Sorry. Again, we're going to need to, uh, just, uh, consider that approval of the set agenda. We need to move on to citizen comments. Because we cannot do that at this time, we'll do that as a special meeting.
So, I just have a question.
Yes.
On the pool pass one more time, I'm just clarifying something. I have a family who's paid for their family of six, a grandmother paid and she, she can add her other grandkids at twenty-five dollars each regardless where they live, as long as they're on the pass.
Yes.
She, no matter how many grandkids she has, it's twenty-five dollars a kid for the summer.
Yes.
Okay. Just clarifying that.
That's what we decided to do. Anybody else? Okay, going to other business, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject and/or take action on the following. A, discussion of the possible action to review bids for the REAP grant number K F two, three dash two water line project and award the project to the apparent low bidder.
You should have that information in front of you. It's very tiny, but it's there.
One hundred and ninety-one dollars and three hundred dollars and two cents, that is?
No, that's probably the highest bidder, we don't want that one. Yes, that's the form, I thought you were saying that was the low bidder, no, no, no.
I said two thirty-five, four thirty-two.
So, right, so we had one, two, three, four, five, we had five bids, the low bid is Marsaw. So if you see it, I don't know if yours is colored or not, if not, it's kind of a dark square. So it's two seventeen, seven thirty-seven.
Mine's blacked out.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, the color one shows it in a dark green, so two seventeen, two one seven, seven three seven is Marsaw's low bid. And what's interesting is Marsaw used to always be the highest bid, now all of a sudden I'm the low bid, so they must be. Yeah. So according, and then Callan Group also gave you a letter of recommendation. I've actually just done two projects with Marsaw and they were fabulous, they did gas line replacement and sewer line work and, you know.
This is the water project on Dunlap?
Yes, sir, it's your REAP grant.
This is the front side, the letter from Callan is on the back. Oh, it was right on.
So, um, for budgets, you guys know on budgets, you, your budget on the REAP grant for this water line project on Dunlap is, uh, grant is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. So that includes the REAP grant amount of a hundred and fifty thousand and then your portion that you put in that covers the rest, okay? So at two seventeen, you guys are under budget, so that's a blessing there. So if some weird thing happens, there's a little bit in there that we've not tapped into. I just wanted you to under, see the financial side of it, where you said, of what you budgeted for the project and why it came in at.
Did you get that amount?
Yeah.
Two seventeen, nine, three seventy-seven.
It's two seventeen.
Seven, seven thirty-seven.
Seven, thirty-seven. Callan Group the same one we're dealing with on the.
Yeah.
Any change?
That is your engineer of choice.
Any change? Nothing?
On this?
Yeah, it's two seventeen, seven thirty-seven.
No, no change, yeah, no change, I got you, okay. No pennies. I was thinking, what did change though?
I know, I was like, I was like, this is just the bid.
We just got it.
So I, I gotta ask you a question, is there like a shut-off valve put in here, like if a water line breaks somewhere, they can shut this valve off? And not have to shut the open town agency off or?
Looks like.
Harold, on item number thirteen, they've got six-inch gate valve in the box, they've got three of them. So I assume that's one on each end and probably one for that fire hydrant. Cause usually they valve them off, so if they need to replace a hydrant, they could go work on it.
Make, make motion to approve, take action on the following, or, oh, that, make motion to review the bid to REAP grant number K F two, three dash two water line project and award the project to the apparent low bidder, which is Marsaw for the amount of two seventeen, seven thirty-seven.
I second that. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
This is the comments? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, new business, no, any matter not known which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with the section three, one, one dash nine, title twenty-five O S. Citizen comments? Councilperson's report?
Nothing.
No? Harold? Bert?
Good.
Motion to. Go ahead.
At the school board meeting Monday night, did you all understand that, uh, that they're having a problem with their project because they couldn't get any bids? Because there's a, a six-inch water line that's running down Mitchell Road on, on that side of the street? And so they got zero bids on that, and apparently that was because of the water line, that they were worried about that. And so they said their superintendent would talk with the town about possibly moving the water line and then helping with the payment on that so they could proceed with their project. But they can't proceed right now because they have no bids. I just thought you might need to be aware of that.
I've seen that barber, but I figured that maybe somebody would be here tonight to.
I think the superintendent's of the town.
Probably not, obviously Kingfisher's probably, but, you know, I figured he'd be here tonight to kind of explain that to us a little bit. But we really can't do that until he comes to us to tell us what we actually need.
I, I assume that he's probably gonna be talking to David though.
He called and said he would prefer to wait until that position was filled.
But that could be.
And David would wanna work, or not want to, but.
That'd be three, that could be three or four months.
Not that you know of.
Uh, yeah, anyhow, I. Thought that was something for you all to think about.
Is the water line on the east side of the road?
No, west.
Well, it's on the west, yes.
You can go down there and you can see it, I mean, you.
Yeah, you can see.
You can see it sticking out, you know. There's, uh, casing up, when it comes up, it's got a cap on it where you shut the, the water on top of it.
That's not gonna be an inexpensive mine.
No.
Because that water line feeds several fire hydrants and all the schools, so.
That means it would have to be done with school not in session then too, don't it?
It needs to be, absolutely.
They planned to start.
Fire protection for the school with the kids.
Absolutely, and without, without water for the restrooms and cafeteria as well.
If I'm not right, then we set up the nursing home, do we go all the way down that way?
It goes, it comes all the way from the, uh, well field and the water plant all the way down Mitchell, all the way through there, yeah. And I think it's an eight inch, if I'm not mistaken, but it might be, it's, it's an eight up to a point and then it's, it may turn to a six.
I know at my corner, I know at my corner, when they dug that valve up, fixed that valve, it was a six-inch line at Red Ford and Mitchell Road.
I think it turns on third tree, I believe, and, and does as an eight inch. It comes up to this water tower over behind the water shop. It comes up to Cherokee and goes down Cherokee and then turns into that water tower. And I think it, I think that's where it breaks from a eight to a six out on Mitchell. Pretty sure.
I thought maybe somebody had already contacted somebody on the board, but I guess no, okay.
I had some phone calls on it, but, you know, I figured somebody would be here tonight to kind of address us, you know, instead of just the town administrator, you know.
That'd be over a million dollar project.
Would you adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Here, yes. Here and yes.